You need to reach out or we need to reach out to you by the departments to make sure that what you know. You can come to a work session and and they don't. Not that they don't know, but they don't know. Yeah, I mean, so it should be like the department. I mean, you know.
Uh, no, a hundred percent and and a hundred percent. Yes. I I was talking about work session just for anything I may have missed. If anyone hears of it from the departments. Just give it to me then or let me know and that'll be that department will be that. One I reach out to that week.
Well, create a dialogue with just more than me and you.
Bingo.
Or you and I, I should say.
That that would be coming. That's how I would say it too. So there's that north country.
Can we have like? Uh, like Donna was saying, can we have like a if you said, okay, I'm gonna be in Wednesday from noon to two. And anybody that wants to come and sit down with me regarding their department, whether it be Donna or or a councilman or is it? Or Sam or whoever and and have some one on one time and say, okay, well, this is what I would like to see. And not have the, you know, and 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 work it out. And then at the end. Like you said, come to a work session, say, okay, well, I talked with Sam, I talked with Don, I talked with Kevin. Uh, and this is some of their concerns and this is how we've worked it out. And here's where we move forward and, you know, again, going back to that communications thing, I'd like to see an advertisement uh thing. If we have a position that's available, uh, whether it be buildings and grounds or. Uh, one of the things I talked about with Sam today was starting a uh. A youth commission. He said, well, what you need to do is find somebody that's that's willing to to chair it. And, you know, that's something we could put on a website and.
Yeah, I would put like those all under job opportunities for the day.
You know what I'm saying? Whether they're paid or unpaid.
And then they rather put them under individual.
On the new site.
Yeah.
There's re- there's oh.
Opportunities of.
Resources and then right here is careers, but it sounds like we may want to change that wording from careers to. Positions.
Yeah, or employment opportunities.
Cause you could have appointed positions, you could have jobs, you could have.
Right. So right now, and I don't know, has the motor vehicle equipment operator been filled?
Not yet.
Okay. That's the only thing I got posted. And I also don't have any like details about it. So I may reach out to you just to get specific qualification qualification details. I don't have those. But that's the only thing I got posted right now.
I interviewed a couple of people, right? Uh, we got a couple of people we're looking at. So that that may.
Yeah, I got a couple.
May or may not be filled by civil service. We got a whole process to go through for that, but.
Okay.
Uh, that that may be coming down when the two hours.
So can you? You know, when everyone or some you, somebody in the town that that's here regularly knows when the best time. For me to come in and set for two hours and I was told I could probably sit in the back corner office back there or something and people could come visit with me.
Will make us back have a big break at.
Yeah, especially if we do away with that big server that's in that back room over there. That would be a good spot for him is kind of in that back corner is. And then work well.
Or or Rachel. The other thing that we don't have that I haven't did and there was, I think some questionable pushback on it. I'm hoping maybe it's changed. Does everyone want to smile and get their picture? If you're an elected official, like would you, if I got a gray backdrop?
Yeah, we did that. I mean, you took some of mine.
I only took you. I I only have you. I don't, I.
We we were on for Rick's website. He had pictures of us.
Sure. Took your picture both came.
Use use those old pictures. We were younger then.
People come in, I'm looking for, no, that doesn't look like you. Okay.
So I guess, um.
Unless you have something further to go on.
I'll be fine.
Is the board willing to give us another couple of months? See if we can.
I will also.
Make some progress on it?
I will also offer. That. I will not charge for the web hosting. Until June. If you got like whatever, you know, however long up till June. To basically get this the way you guys want it. So we won't look at anything until June. And by all means, if in between there now and then you guys decide, no, it's not working. Let me know.
Let me ask you this.
Yes.
When does your contract end with us?
That's up for some debate, I guess, in the fact that when it was approved was February.
February.
But when it was signed was March. March first, wow. Second.
So could we possibly give them a three month extension? Now, things worked out? Would three months be reasonable?
Well, the contract is for a year and if we sign it in March, we're looking at. All of the rest of this month plus February into March.
That's enough time for me.
We're gonna, that that gives them almost two full months to see what's going on. At that time. Reggie, I I'm not opposed to extending it. For a couple of months and see if things are going the right way.
Things are going good.
Or if they're really going good, I'm sure that all of a sudden the board would go along with signing another contract. But, uh, you know, like I said, it's, uh, it's it's just been very frustrating and, uh. I'm sick of getting pounded. I'm gonna tell you that right now.
I I've never, I I like talking to all you guys. So like, I don't.
Oh, no, I, you and I are very rarely have. You know, a a higher tone conversation. It has happened to you. You know, I've been frustrated.
You.
You know, it's got up there, but, uh, like I said, most of the time it's, hey, Pat, I need this. Can you put this on? I got this going on. Do this and yep, you're like, yep, I'll have it up as soon as I can. I'll have it up in two hours or. I hey, I'm, I can work on it right now, like the last agenda. You're like, it was up within what forty five minutes from the time that I called you.
It is.
And, uh, you know, I I understand that we all have lives and you could be in the middle of dinner when I call you. So, you know, I don't expect you to do it right then, but. You know, the.
I I found you do work at all hours.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've been at the phone on the phone at nine o'clock at night before, but like I said, it's, uh.
Last thing I need to address with the board.
Territory.
Is CST group Carrie. The way our system works is I can give her a use like a Carrie at Skyler Falls NY dot com. And that gives her access to the web hosting panel. That's where she can set up emails if she so chooses. I would prefer that that comes through me and only use or maybe not Carrie to set up like. Backup user at Skyler Falls and then put that away. But what I don't do and nor is it standard or recommended. Is give the what they call the root or the administrator, like the the keys to the kingdom. I don't even use those. I, we all have accounts and you get the privileges of administrator to the account. That's how that works. That's best practice. I've heard like kind of very concerning things because Carrie offered up that you guys are getting rid of your domain, getting rid of like centralized. Management and everything like, I don't know what that is. That's fine. I I can give her the keys. What I can give her is the domain right now for the next year. Uh, it was a three year when you guys renewed it with, um. The actual domain name, the registration of the domain name was through Homestead. Rick did that. And that that was purchased on a three year, it's like twenty bucks a year on a three year plan.
Yeah, they're welcoming a ten year now.
That one has a administrator has everything. So I can give her that. That's not even mine. But on our system, like you just said, your username gets administrative privileges. Whoever you want to be a second person or whoever the board wants to be that second person, we can do that. And then I, my user account has administrative privileges. That's how that's done in today's world. Um, so I can give her half of what she wants, but I can't give her fully what she wants. Um. I wanted to talk to the board to see if we want to create like another user account. I call it backup user or something. You know, to store in the safe that she's talking about or, um, this secure printed document.
Well, basically they're 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 hired as our IT security now for the town. And that was a conversation that got a little heated too. Because like you said, you didn't want to really give away the keys to the kingdom, but what I, like I told you that night, I said that my understanding it is our website. And I, I said, I I have no problem with giving her what she needs, but I don't even have it. So we need it down here. And like I said, I think by law, two officers down there should have that.
Three, yeah, three people total.
Yeah, so like I said, um. You know, I I I asked you to work with Carrie so that we could get through the the growing pains of securing all of our.
She actually was saying that you had approved taking all of the email off the server. Getting rid of the file server and and going to, uh, OneDrive. Going to Microsoft Accounts. And getting out of like getting rid of the storage or the computer domain. Which would put Skyler Falls decades in the past. I don't, I don't. I'm hoping I just don't know and don't understand. By all means. I own, I own a company that, so I know what we're talking about. I know what she's talking about. It does not seem like it's an accurate step. I would hope. That the board that you would have con- contacted like town of Plattsburgh, town of Peru, city of Plattsburgh, Clinton County. That's going in the wrong direction that she was telling me. She didn't need to tell me this though. I I don't, I I wasn't asking that.
Right.
Um, but I, like I said, I just don't give a general. Everyone doesn't use admin. Everyone uses their own account, which has admin privileges and that gives you the keys to the. Well, for auditing purposes. So that I'm willing to do that, but she's like, no, I just want the the root password. I I won't, I I actually won't and can't do that. That's like ethically unwrong. I just can't do that. Because then she could be in there and say and like act as being or anyone, not her, I say she's a bad person, anyone gets that. They can be acting as someone else and you can't audit it because it just shows admin was in there. That's why I don't do it that way. No one, no one, that's not, it's industry practice. You don't do that. No one gets someone else's password. You just don't do that. So I can work with her. I'll give her what she needs. She just didn't like what I told her I would give her, but I promise you it gives full access to the entire thing. It's just. It's underneath an audited account. Uh, auditing is a requirement, so. Uh, there just seems to be like some conflict there that, you know, I I said I have to wait to the board and she's reached out to me twice and I haven't given her what she wanted. I knew I was gonna come tonight. So I will give her, like I said, credentials that give her admin access and. By all means, the Homestead, they have just a, it's it's an old program. So it's just admin and that's that's the keys to the kingdom. You guys can have that. Um. You know, we all, we all have to use that.
But as far as the rule is of what the website.
No one has that. I don't even, I mean, I have it. I know it's what it is. I don't use it because if you use it, you expose yourself. Every time I have to type that root password in, which gives you the keys to the kingdom. If that's, if there's a man in the middle attack or someone's like, look, you know, like hackers looking in.
Don't forget they are our security. So that's why I think that they.
They also.
Make sure that they.
If they're the security company, they would not be asking. If they are, I hate to say it this way, if they are as good as they are doing what they're doing. They would not ask for that.
I say them. You know, I like what I've heard from Pat. Can we take like maybe a sixty or ninety day? Cool enough thing, see what he can do. See if he can fix.
He was in the bathroom.
Issues that we know we've got.
He was in the bathroom.
Yeah.
So basically we're giving him until February.
Oh, we did that.
Um, and then what? The possible extension or even a full contract after that. So, yeah, what you're asking for. And you got a little one I was talking about.
Okay, comes with age, right?
Perfect. I, no, I think it was a great idea.
But, yeah, we we definitely need to see some.
Progress.
And if there's issues on our site, don't sit there and wait, Pat, and say, okay, I I have no content, so I haven't did anything.
Tell you what.
Say.
You have my word. I will tell you later.
Talk to, you're town clerk. I need to talk to you or I need to talk to Sam or I need to talk to Mike. Because I need content on their specific spot on the website.
I will be very direct right here. Cell phone, perfect. Rachel can attest that I can be very direct and and we will get this done. It's in the best interest of the town.
Love that.
And, uh, like I said, but so.
So does man.
You're, you know, as far as the pushback, you did get that when you did that first training that day and everybody hates to always start with a new email. I mean.
Well, no, that wasn't, that wasn't the issue. We can't just change, like you said, because people are gonna, uh, we're gonna miss a lot of mail because. They don't know the new email and my email's not working.
Several months of transition before everybody knows what our new email is.
Pat, we will set that up.
Just one quick question. Pat, are you saying that our emails? Will be transferred into the assigned ones that we get?
It'll be under our domain one.
I have no ability to touch outside accounts. We will forward.
Okay, clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
What will happen, and we can even set this up on your personal ones if you so want to. Is we can actually set it up so it automatically forwards. Anything that gets to SF supervisor will forward to the other.
That's what I would want mine.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much for your time. I'm so sorry I took so much time.
That's all right. I think we, uh, me, I got a lot out of it.
Yeah.
Is there anything we're watching for?
So Pat, how soon? Did you say I could start sending you minutes so that people won't bother me?
Uh, I, so real quick, that new site, I gotta do it off hours. So I was thinking Friday night. You know, I, there's also no meetings over the weekend. There's nothing that needs to have meetings up and stuff. So if it comes down midnight to six AM.
I think last time when you did, uh, switch on the site, you needed forty eight hours of.
That we don't need as much this time. It's it's, uh, it's just four to six hours.
Okay.
So Friday night, midnight, you'll actually see a whole bunch of them appear when I put that live because they're actually out there. Um, now, real quick question, do we want to go? I see, I didn't take them. You can send them to me. Do we want to go all the way back to two thousand one? On the website?
No, probably two years.
Two years.
That's what we did before. And then there's also like other stuff that needs to go on. The annual financial report and all that. We send up water reports. I can do all that because I get them. And if you're okay before not scanning them, I could just do like I did with Rick and just send them attached files.
They'll bring them, attach them.
Yeah, that's easy.
If you want to meet like Friday.
No, I'm off.
No, oh, oh, yeah, sorry. Fridays, no.
No, it's tax season.
It is tax season.
Yeah, work weekends here.
When, when, when could we meet? Or like, like, I will give you a chunk of time. Cause you're, you've got all the documents. You're the holder of all the public. No. I'll call you.
Okay. Don't email me. It's not working.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Appreciate it. And very nice meeting you. Looking forward to it.
Sounds like a large part of what I'll start doing is, uh, tracing all of you down. So I'm not crazy. I just want your information.
Yeah, no. No, we understand that we need contact.
There you go.
Pounding it up all pretty.
What, what was your name again?
Rachel.
Rachel?
Rachel Paul.
Oh, sure. You want to unplug it? This plug is right behind you.
Oh. No, I knew that.
Does Rachel have a contact number she'd like to give out?
Oh, uh, yes. My cell phone number is five one eight, five nine three, two nine eight seven.
Two nine eight seven?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got that, Kevin? I don't have the pen.
I got the last two, but I'll get the rest.
Five nine three. Five nine three.
I don't think.
If you're gonna call me, we're having a conversation.
Is that right?
Yep.
Cool.
Okay. All right, I think we, uh, filled the website discussion today. Uh, next one is the MOU on, um. So I gave everybody a copy of these a couple of months back now and, um.
What's up for you?
Uh, have anybody got a chance to go over this? And look at it and see if there's anything they wanted to change or didn't want to change because. Uh, we're getting to the point where I need to get this thing signed. Uh, this is gonna affect a couple, at least a USDA RD grant. Um, we're gonna need some new underwriting probably. Um. Due to the fact that they're gonna do a section of.
I don't think that's on.
I think it was. Is that yours?
I have, in other words, I got some, I got like fifteen gears that I gotta shift through here to get everything worked out. With the rest of the, the grants again. So I can't keep waiting on this. If you guys are good with it, I'm gonna push, um, Mr. Earl. To get a new MRU sent out to me. That's the most updated version on about the end of November. And here we are in January. So I can't, I don't want to wait any longer on it. Um, I'd like to move it forward. So I just wanted to make sure because I was the one doing all the negotiation on it. I want to make sure everybody was good and. They didn't see anything that I had missed there. They don't want to ask for anything different or if they didn't like any of the language.
I'm gonna need a resolution.
Yeah, that will be done by resolution and that all depends on if the county can do a final. Uh, memorandum of understanding prior to our meeting on twenty four. Yeah, you would, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll keep everybody up to date. I just want to let him know to go ahead and put this. In stone if if everybody's good with everything that they see so far. They gave a bit of concessions. Uh, they only do quite a bit for us. And, uh. It's been a long four months of negotiations back and forth, but, uh. I I want to, and I'm sure they do too, we want to keep that, uh, Sanro water project on on track for December. If not spring. I don't know how soon they can get a shovel in the ground. I doubt they're gonna get it in any faster than we would on the Marshall water project, which looks like the earliest we're gonna get. A shovel in the ground on that is probably about August or September of this year. Get them. Uh, been in contact with, uh, Douglas's girlfriend. Uh, he's going over the bond run right now with a foam tooth comb. I did have a couple of questions on that also because the bond was written through USDA RD for, um. Five million, six hundred. Two thousand, I think. Um. We will not need all of that with the new residential planning. So, um. That's gonna change, like I said, a few other things. This right here too, if they do that. If they, if they're proposing to do from, like I said, that they agree to it for the bridge, which they pretty much have. Um, all the sand road. You're looking at estimate estimates from about nine hundred thousand to about one point three million that'll come out of the. The Marshall water project that. That is for full year stuff. And then it'll pull this right. So, um. I want to get going on this so that I can find all of the other. Group that's used to know right off the bat. And then we're, we're gonna have, like I say, a lot of gears to shift through. Um, one of them being if we can come up as a, as a consensus on who will actually be the engineer on the project. And if we've vetted it out, hopefully we can vet it all out with one, um, installation company, whoever that construction company is. Uh, things are gonna be a lot harder if, you know, they go with one engineer. We have another engineer that was putting out bids. From the town on certain aspects of that water project and you're putting out a bid for that section of the water project. So. Like I said, that's why I said there's a lot of gears I gotta shift through. So I need to get this kind of nailed down. So that I can bring it back to a resolution to the total town board so that we can sign it. If you got any questions, I can ask them. Um, if not, then I'll contact, um, Mr. Earl and see if he can't. Put this in a final draft.
Do you know who the county engineer is?
They've been using Barton and La Judas.
I was gonna say, I think it's Barton and La Judas.
Okay, um. And they did all the appointment area engineering for the emergent contaminants grant, about five million dollar emergent contaminants grant. It would be nice, like I said, if we're all using the same engineer on that that project and all using the same. Construction outfit doing that project. It just, it just would simplify things. I, I, I don't want to speak for the county or Casella or anybody else. And I don't want to speak for, um, WEA because it's a WEA grant under emergent contaminants. So. They are going to have their own guidance on how they want them to move forward. So there's gonna. There's a ton of gears to shift through, you know, to put all of this together. But in the long run, it's gonna work well for all the residents in town because, again, it looks like we're gonna get a water line up through the. The Sanro, that looks like, uh, the Marshall Water District will have a, a burning water line.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up something and, yeah, that, that might be way out of line. What are we thinking about as far as natural gas? Is there any way we can do this when we rip up the ground? Is there any way we can throw this in that?
No, I wish. So normally what, and I've checked into that too. So normally they never run those two lines.
Sorry, sorry. No, I understand.
They like them on opposite sides of the road. Um. That way, if you're digging for a water line, you don't have to worry about digging up a gas line. Uh, I did check into the, I've been working with the county. The town of Plattsburgh, um, Rick from the legislators' offices, uh, Casella's. Uh, we're even looking at a sewer line. Um. Right from the landfills, very preliminary. It's probably three years out if if we get the funding for it. Um, right to the city plan. So there's a lot of, a lot of interagency workings there going on to put together. Um, but when we were discussing that, I asked that, would it be? Advantageous for us to dig up and have them side by side? And even then, they said, we don't even like a sewer line. Anyways, next to the water line because if you have to main, do maintenance of either one of them, you want a good seven foot separation. So. To answer your question, I guess, yeah, that, they don't usually run them that close, um, where it would be financially feasible to run them both at the same time. The other issue that we got is with politics being what they are in New York State. And, uh, at the federal level, uh, natural gas is now part of the carbon footprint. It was supposed to be our twenty year transition fuel, you know, we got a abundant amount of natural gas in the US. But unfortunately, our governor or ex-governor, former, he was in for the four year moratorium on all the gas lines. So we've been under that four year moratorium since I took office because that was the first thing I tried to do. And to work with, uh, Mr. Trump, believe with, uh, Nysight to get that accomplished. And. I thought maybe it was not enough interaction or interest when they put the flyers out. And, um, that was not the case. When they put the flyers out, the interest was there. Uh, there was some concern about. Going underneath the river and boring underneath and coming back up the other side. It went back then in two thousand twenty when I first got in, it was estimated about a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, Nysight no longer will put a. Gas line across a DLP bridge because when they have to maintain them or if they have to tear them out and rebuild them, it disrupts the whole municipal services thing. So. The new thing is that they would rather attach to the. So the new thing is that they would rather attach to the bridge like the water line is now. They would bore it and the river would come up the other side. But even that, it goes by the thermes. They want the end user, at the time they wanted the therm to be about, please, don't quote me, I think it was like forty seven or fifty cents a therm. And ours came in at about maybe buck nine with everything that they would have to do. But it all, like I said, I tried to work my way through that. And when it came right down to it, they said, no matter what you're trying to work your way through, you're working your way into a box because they put a four year moratorium on it. Now our new governor has, wants the state to adopt the New York City plan of doing away with all natural gas and propane. And it's not looking good to answer your question.
You know what, I always say it because it makes too much sense.
It does. And I thought the same thing, but the biggest thing is that the state and federal level, they want nothing to do with any gas lines right now. They're trying to take the gas stoves away now. So, you know, I should tell you something.
Oh, it is on one already, 2025.
Yeah, it's crazy. It's crazy, yes, but that's what I'm saying. But if there's no complaints on this, then I will talk to Mike about getting the final resolution together. This I kind of got ahead of myself on. So that first email that you're going to see there is update on the Marshall water project. When all the snow was gone here, a week ago, before we just got this last batch, we were trying to keep this, this project on pace as best we can. So they, they went through, they did the first arrow flyover. So some of the control points they hit and are valid so that he can start going through with a final engineering of the project, okay? Some of the issues that they had was the light our point on the sides of the road. And I, and they said basically there was too much snow on the shoulders of where the driveways were. I'm like, there was no, no snow other than what the five or six foot of the snowing plow was there.
There wasn't even any of that when they did that. We didn't have nothing on the ground.
I mean, I had maybe a three foot bank at the bottom of my driveway where I pushed it on the sides, but then the whole side of the road was gone. So they're looking at doing one more flyover. It doesn't cost us, that was one thing I did check.
It's not going to cost us.
It don't cost us every time they, they put a plane up. No, they're responsible, once we hire them, they get it done. So if it takes them three or four times to get the plane in the air and have a clear enough sky, because that was the other thing, he goes, I said, right now is the best time, you know? We just got a big mountain and I hired green grass at my house, you know what I mean? And he goes, yeah, he goes, but the cloud cover is too, too much right now. So they couldn't get clear air out. But they did get some of it done, which like I said, that's a big plus. It'll keep us on track to at least getting this project going. So I'm hoping by August or September. I want to let you know about that. Like I said, he mentions USD ARD in there. We need to finish up their paperwork, the CDPG is just, that never ends. CDPG is the worst of paperwork, so I work on that all the time, but at least it's all up to date and everything's good. USD ARD, one of the last pieces of paper they want is that bond resolution. So I want to see if we can't pass that on January 24th. That is the acceptance of the bond. And my question was, now that we just got more funding, which is the second part of this, this came from Elise Stefanics' office and it says they're officially, that's what I was waiting for, something official. Says, I'm ready to officially notify you that your community project funding request for $2,562,500 for the town of Scarlet Falls Marshall Water District Improvement has passed in the recent federal ominous bill. Our office is working with different agencies involved in the process to clarify the process by which these funds will be accessed by the town. Once we have obtained the information, we will be following up to work through the process, basically to get us that money. So that's going to take that bond and cut it in half. It's going to make that project pretty close to ninety percent funded. Between what Casella and the county with the MOU, what they're allowed, they're going to do out of it and taking that roughly 1.3 out of it, plus the extra two and a half million plus we just got. Basically it'll cut that bond and the grant on top of the USD ARD money was 1.3 million, as everybody's been aware of. I thought that we would lose the whole 1.3 million because two hundred, or two, two and a half millions way over that. After talking to Lucas Manning, he said that, no. He goes, your grant is based upon your bond. So he goes, we gave you 1.3 million grant on top of the bond of 5.6. So he goes, now if you reduce the bond and say you only need 2.5, we would cut basically the grant money in half. So we'd end up between probably 600 and 700,000 still in grant money. You have to use the bond first, but then they would throw the grant money out of that. So instead of losing the whole grant money that I thought we were going to, if we got any other money, so we're not, we're going to lose about half of it. But either way, it's going to make the project pretty close to ninety percent funded. So if we don't move forward with this and get this thing going, you're never going to get that opportunity again. The bond, it doesn't change, the underwriting on the bond, it still stays in at 1.75%. They don't see that in our lifetimes ever being that low again. Locked in just before all the interest rates went up. So we're locked in at 1.75 for thirty eight years. So they would re-underwrite what the bond and the grant is. To make long story short, they would like us to pass the bond resolution, excuse me, the loan on the bond and grant resolution on January so we can tidy up and finish up the rest of the USD ARD paperwork to lock everything in. And that's saying that we're accepting up to that amount. It doesn't say that we have to take it off. So that's one of the things that I just sent to Douglas Goodfriend today. Is I had him look and review that paperwork on that loan for the bond and the grant. And I just want to make sure that what Lucas said, because Lucas goes, I'm not a lawyer. So he goes, have your bond attorney look at it, but he goes, to my knowledge, you're not, you're not obligated to take all of that funding. But what it would allow is that you could take up to that amount of funding, even though we're not going to need it. Because my question was, do you have to re-underwrite that whole resolution because of those numbers have changed? Will change, I just want to figure out how they're going to pay us that money. That could go under ORC, it could go under WEA, it could go under USD ARD, or it could be paid out by CDPG. All the alphabets that the government has to get that money to them to overs, for oversight to get it to us, that hasn't been looked at yet. But it is guaranteed that we did it.
So you're going to have a resolution during next meeting?
That wasn't nothing bits and bolts of that, yeah. So if I have a resolution, if I have the acceptance of the original, even though we're not going to need it. But I just wanted everybody to understand the background and to understand why it would still be those numbers, even though we're not going to need any of ours near that much. All right? But we, we can't wait any longer on it. We got, we just used up twelve months of two years. So we've got twelve months to get this thing locked down. Any questions on any of that? So we get the MOU, most of our.
Rick's in that.
Okay, Mr. Facko, you asked for a.
Price comparison.
Yes. They just got done doing that. My work buddy there wants me to do a comparison on what it would be ADV alarm rate versus EDU. So we're also working our way through that right now. And I just contacted the county treasurer's office and they're, they've got me the information that we were missing. So that Leburgs can figure out what it would be by ADV alarm rate. They were missing a few pieces of information that I know Donna worked on for a couple of hours today to try to fill those places in. And then we're going to send that to Leburgs and they will come up with, you'll be able to look at your, your name, your residence and say, okay, here's what it would cost me to do this project if we do it the way we're doing it now by EDU, or excuse me, by ADV alarm rate. EDU, the big difference is you're going to pay, ADV alarm rate, you're going to pay based on your assessment. So if you're living in a $598,000 house, you're going to pay more than the person that's living in an $87,000 double line or single line, okay? So again.
Which I got to point out, which is the way everything always is currently. Eric and I have discussed this.
The EDU breaks it up evenly so that no matter what your income is, no matter what your residence is worth, EDU, everybody, the bill is split evenly amongst all three hundred and three users.
Unless you have more than one unit. If you have four units, the EDUs are times four.
Right, but it's still broken up by the user.
Units.
Individual unit, individual housing unit, that's what the EDU is. The advantage of the EDU is that if you have Marshallville School, okay? And we're going to charge them at fifty-two EDUs. You're going to end up with Marshallville School paying about seventy, probably eight thousand dollars of that water bill. Okay? Versus the way it is now, and I think we charge them about three grand, right, a year?
That's the contract price, but that's why I had to plug in those numbers because now they're going to be assessed at three billion.
Yeah, that, that number we're working on right now because that hasn't been changed in years and that kind of slipped through the cracks on the Marshall water district. So we have to look at that number and bring it up to the standard. It's way low for a school. We contacted a couple of other towns. A few of the towns actually played with the EDUs for about, oh, two years, she said, just about, before they got one that they figured worked for everybody. That's the nice thing about the EDUs is that it can be changed accordingly until you get it balanced out where you're making your bills, you're making your bond payment, and you're still paying for the water that you're using.
So if it was implemented, when would it kick in? Like the first of the year?
What's that?
The different rating, the EDUs.
It would, the EDUs would, would. From what I understand is, talking to Lucas Manning, it's usually about seventy-five percent of all your money spent on a project before they say, okay, here's your 1.3 million for this. Here's your 2.5 bond for this, you know what I'm saying? So basically what we would have is a bank that we would guarantee that we have the X amount of dollars coming to them. And then the bank would then put the money upfront.
Almost like a construction loan?
And then at the end, when you hit, they call it closing, just like you would close on a house. When seventy-five percent of the funding is done, then they feel comfortable that you are going to finish the project and then they drop all that money to you. In the interim, then we would have a bank that would bankroll us, unless we had enough money at the town level to take care of what we're spending out, okay?
But I think what Mr. Facko was asking about the EDUs was like Macy Lane. When Macy Lane got established, they had to pay taxes before they got their water district, one year in advance.
I see, okay.
So we would probably do that as well. Now, it might not be the water clerk at that point, but that's usually the way it should be.
Okay, thanks.
So like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of gears that have to be shifted here. Nothing is set in stone on exactly what way we have to go.
Kevin agrees to disagree.
I can agree to disagree on EDUs because it just makes it, that, that is the new norm. That is what the state and national agreement is on all new water lines is that they do them by EDUs. But we have the right as home rule to do it any way we want. We can still do it by ADV alarm rate. There's nothing tying us into any particular road, you know?
We have one more town that has EDUs out of the fourteen, that's it.
Well, because they just got done on my project, it's a couple of years ago, it's a new one.
Okay, go on, go on, we disagree on this.
Yeah, most of the water districts haven't really been.
Reg, Reg, I can tell you, this is a tough, tough call.
Oh, yes.
It's going to take, we really need to look at it. I'm serious, not for, not because Donna wants to win the way, or Kevin wants to know the way. We really need to figure it out.
So people know what they're paying.
We're going to, we're going to look at everybody.
And something like that, again, we can even, just for public interest, we can throw something on the website and say, hey, if you're in one water district, would you rather have your bond payment and your water bill paid by EDU, which is once every three months, it would be a quarterly, or split four ways? And or would you rather pay it all on your ADV alarm and your taxes at the end of the year?
So the problem's going to be, and again, we could, this is a good discussion, but the problem's going to be, you got a guy that's got a $500,000 house and he's going to pay $600 a year. And the guy that's got a $80,000 house is going to pay $600 a year. So everybody that's got a high-end house is going to say, I like that idea. Everybody that's got a low-end house is going to say, well, why the hell should I pay that much? I mean, this guy's, yeah, if you do EDUs. And everything else in the town is done by ADV. And, you know, highway.
But the only thing that you gotta, we gotta look at is what we can charge for those businesses and like the school and like the fire station to offset the cost, which are the taxes and the amount of money in those budgets are split so much between so many more people that it may be a half a cent increase to their, their taxes. You know what I'm saying?
Well, when you look at, okay, if the school goes up or the fire department goes up and their taxes go up thirty, from three thousand to thirty-five thousand, we're going to pay that tax anyway. So you're going to pay it one way or another. But, and again, it's absolutely something.
It would exponentially split the costs. Because when you're looking at three hundred, exactly, because you're looking at three hundred people in the water district. If you look at, at like Marshallville School, that goes on Saturday night, school.
Right, and everybody in Saturday night.
And everybody in that district will pay, that's what I'm saying, you're talking to fractions of a cent. Even, even you. It's, it's fractions.
It's definitely something that needs to be looked at.
And that's why it gives you more room, wiggle room, so that you're not killing three hundred people.
I agree.
So those are the things that we'll talk about in the discussion.
Yeah, I can agree with you on some stuff.
That's good, fine. All right, so getting back to what we originally started, I apologize for regressing that for a second. I'll give you each a copy of these. That's Mike Newell with that. Yeah, so anyways, basically this, now we're switching gears here again, Rick's in that. So what we're looking at is a, a public-private partnership between the Trompeles installing the water up there and us paying for the water pipes and all the, the extra, the street shut offs and that interconnection and the drill across the road. So basically what the town, what the state and the feds want to see is using public-private partnerships. By using this public-private partnership, we will drive down the cost and improve the services for our residents that live in our district. And that's the way they want things to go today. So basically, looking at the cost analysis, if we were only to do Rick's in that, all right, in high-pressure PVC, you would look at a cost of 159,000. That's pipe and insulation, and that's what the estimated cost would be to bid it out. If we did it in duct tull iron, you're looking at about a hundred, basically a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred dollars. Okay? And that is just serving Rix and App. If we allowed Mr. Trump believe to do the work and us to pay for the pipe, we're estimated to come in at a cost of seventy one thousand four hundred for PVC and ninety three thousand six hundred for duct tull iron. So on there, you're going to see on that back page, you're going to see where I did the math for you. So basically, we're going to save eighty seven thousand six hundred dollars if we use PVC, allowing Mr. Trump believe to do the work. And we're going to save ninety three thousand six hundred dollars, or excuse me, we're going to, I stand corrected, we're going to save seventy six thousand five hundred dollars if we do a duct tull iron. Now, remember that these cost savings are inclusive of the extra loop and giving water to those other three residents that would then be included into the Marshall Water District because that, as this starts out, we're going to have to have an outside user agreement with each and every resident up there. And then they would sign something stating that they would be consolidated, that they are aware, and they would be consolidated into the Marshall Water District after we get through the tons of other projects that I got going on. And I can't, I can't add or delete anything to the boundary lines at this time because it would screw up all our grants and our bond and everything else because you would change the scope of the project. So after the completion of the update to the Marshall Water District, then we would extend the boundaries of the Marshall Water District to include Rix and App. I would like to someday extend it all the way up to Broadwell where we could do phase four of this project and loop Broadwell over to twenty two B. But again, we're saving eighty seven six or seventy six five and having another whole loop to the system.
Okay, question, Kevin. Is that ARPA money the source for this? Or are we back to the idea of a separate loan for this issue? Are we still using ARPA? Is that our source for this account?
There are a couple ways we can do it. Right now, we're using ARPA. That's what we all agreed upon on this board when we looked at the Rix and App.
I didn't, but that's okay, go ahead.
Well, originally you did, I can go back to the record.
Okay, that's not the case.
I know recently that we've had some issues up there. But yes, what we're, we can't.